Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Board of Education. As always, the Board of Education is interested in encouraging members of the public to share their ideas, comments, and questions. Public participation opportunities will be available at the beginning and the end of this meeting, and as stated by Board policy, no person shall speak for more than three minutes, and each period of public participation will be limited to thirty minutes. If you have any questions or concerns regarding matters of the consent agenda through the Items for Discussion and Action, which are Items 1 through 4, it may be important for you to utilize the first public participation opportunity. You may also send your feedback and questions to us through our email account, which is B O E at FarmingdaleSchools.org. Questions will be shared with members of the central administrative team, who will respond in a timely fashion. Thank you for your anticipated courtesy and cooperation. In the event of fire, and/or if you hear the fire bell, we must exit this building. Please use the nearest exit, which is in the back of the room to the right. And now please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I make a motion to amend the order of business contained in the public meeting agenda set forth in Policy 2350 to allow the Board to vote upon the consent agenda, review and vote on discussion and action items, and consider discussion items prior to the superintendent's update during the November 9th, 2022 meeting of the Board of Education.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of Items 1A through I, 2A through J, and 3A through D be approved as a whole with action recorded separately.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the revised tax exemption resolution?
I make a motion that the Farmingdale Union Free School District Board of Education adopt a revised property tax exemption resolution for persons with disabilities and limited income.
Can I have a second? Mr. Mottisi?
Thank you, Mr. Morales. Certain residents may be eligible to receive a property tax exemption based on their annual income and residency status. This exemption was originally approved by the Board at the August meeting. Since that time, new laws were enacted which increased the maximum annual income threshold from $37,399 to $58,399. The amount of the reduction received by eligible taxpayers is based on a sliding scale from 5 to 15%, uh, 5 to 50%, excuse me, depending on their annual income. And this new exemption will take effect for the 2324 school year. Happy to answer any questions that the Board may have.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve a second revised tax exemption resolution?
I make a motion that the Farmingdale Union Free School District Board of Education adopt a revised property tax exemption resolution for senior citizens with limited income.
Mr. Mottisi?
So similar to the previous motion, certain residents may be eligible for this exemption based on their age, annual income, and residency status. Again, this was originally approved by the Board back in August, and has been revised for the new income thresholds. This new exemption again will take place in the 2324 school year.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mottisi? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Can I have a motion to accept the independent audit report and corrective action plan for year ending June 30, 2022?
I make a motion that the Farmingdale Union Free School District Board of Education accepts the independent audit report and corrective action plan for year ending June 30, 2022 for study and file.
Mr. Mottisi?
Thank you, Mr. Morales. In the audience with us today is Mr. Sean O'Malley from Naraki Smith. He is a supervisor. He was the lead on the engagement. I'm happy to report that all of our state filings were submitted in a timely manner. We did go, these financial statements were reviewed by our audit committee, and a copy of these financial statements will be available on the website for the community after the Board approves them tonight. At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Sean O'Malley to go into a little bit more detail on the financial statements and the audit that happened this past summer.
Thanks, Mike. Good evening, everyone. As Mike said, my name is Sean O'Malley. I'm the supervisor of the audit team that performed this year's audit. First and foremost, I just want to, on behalf of the firm, thank you all for our relationship with the district. It's truly a privilege and an honor to serve you, and we value our relationship with everyone. Just a quick summary of the audit and the financial statements. First and foremost, to confirm our scope of services, Naraki Smith was contracted to perform an audit of the district's financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2022 in accordance with U.S. generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards, and the provisions of the OMB Uniform Guidance. This also includes the district's extra classroom activity funds. Just a couple of comments on the audit itself. There was a timely, accurate closing of the books and records. Once again, we had zero audit adjustments, which is a compliment to Business Office, and shows that the information that you get throughout the year can be relied on. And once again, we had excellent cooperation from everyone involved, and in particular, Mike Mottisi and Brian Ernst in the Business Department. As Mike said, we did meet with the Audit Committee back on September 29th, and there we did a thorough review of the financial statements before they were submitted to New York State. All reports, including the financial statements in ST3, were submitted to the State on time. And just one comment that I want to point out as a change to this year's financial statements was the implementation of GASBY 87, which relates to the leases. This year, the district was required to perform calculations to bring both leases that they pay on, as well as leases that they receive on, onto the balance sheet. This resulted in a right-of-use asset and corresponding lease liability, as well as a lease receivable and a deferred inflow of resources. Just to point out that we have, once again, issued a clean or unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which reflects that we performed our audit in accordance with all applicable professional standards and found everything to be fairly stated. We did not cite the district for any material weaknesses nor significant deficiencies in internal control. We did have one compliance finding this year relating to the school lunch fund. New York State requires that you maintain three months of average expenditures within the fund at a given time, and due to the reimbursement rates of the free lunch, the district, as well as most other districts, were in excess of that threshold. So that was the corrective action plan that was mentioned earlier that was approved by the Board, and we had no compliance findings related to the single audit. Just a couple of highlights on the district-wide financial statements. As of the year-end, June 30, 2022, there were capital assets, net of depreciation of around $122.5 million, with a net increase of $8.9 million from the prior year. There were bonds payable, net of premiums and discounts, of $35.2 million, with a decrease of $795,000 from the prior year due to the current-year debt service payments. Total unemployment benefits, the obligation totals $299 million, with a decrease of $131 million from the prior year due to changes in actuarial assumptions and significant changes in the discount rate the actuary used. And the district's proportionate share of the net pension system, due to, again, actuarial changes, was actually in an asset position this year versus a liability in the past. And just to comment on the governmental fund financial statements, the general fund ended the year with a fund balance of $28.6 million, of which $48,000 is non-spendable, $15.4 million is restricted, which includes the capital reserve, the employee benefit accrued liability reserve, unemployment insurance, workers' compensation, insurance reserve, and the retirement contributions reserve. $6 million was assigned, including $5 million appropriated for the subsequent year's budget, and $960,000 of encumbrances, and that left $7.3 million of unassigned fund balance, which was within the 4% limitation set forth by New York State. In the general fund, there was a decrease in fund balance of $5.4 million on an overall budget of $182.6 million. And in the capital projects fund, there was current-year capital outlay of $11.3 million, primarily relating to the aquatic center, bathroom projects, and smart schools bond project. And thank you for your time, and if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. O'Malley. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much again. We appreciate your work and all of your efforts.
Can we have a vote on that resolution?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion to accept the extra classroom activity funds independent audit?
I make a motion that the Farmingdale Union Free School District Board of Education accepts the extra classroom activity funds independent audit report for the year ending June 30, 2022 for study and file.
Mr. Mottisi?
Thank you, Mr. Morales. In the audience with us today is Mr. Sean O'Malley from Naraki Smith. He is a supervisor. He was the lead on the engagement. I'm happy to report that all of our state filings were submitted in a timely manner. We did go, these financial statements were reviewed by our audit committee, and a copy of these financial statements will be available on the website for the community after the Board approves them tonight. At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Sean O'Malley to go into a little bit more detail on the financial statements and the audit that happened this past summer.
Thanks, Mike. Good evening, everyone. As Mike said, my name is Sean O'Malley. I'm the supervisor of the audit team that performed this year's audit. First and foremost, I just want to, on behalf of the firm, thank you all for our relationship with the district. It's truly a privilege and an honor to serve you, and we value our relationship with everyone. Just a quick summary of the audit and the financial statements. First and foremost, to confirm our scope of services, Naraki Smith was contracted to perform an audit of the district's financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2022 in accordance with U.S. generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards, and the provisions of the OMB Uniform Guidance. This also includes the district's extra classroom activity funds. Just a couple of comments on the audit itself. There was a timely, accurate closing of the books and records. Once again, we had zero audit adjustments, which is a compliment to Business Office, and shows that the information that you get throughout the year can be relied on. And once again, we had excellent cooperation from everyone involved, and in particular, Mike Mottisi and Brian Ernst in the Business Department. As Mike said, we did meet with the Audit Committee back on September 29th, and there we did a thorough review of the financial statements before they were submitted to New York State. All reports, including the financial statements in ST3, were submitted to the State on time. And just one comment that I want to point out as a change to this year's financial statements was the implementation of GASBY 87, which relates to the leases. This year, the district was required to perform calculations to bring both leases that they pay on, as well as leases that they receive on, onto the balance sheet. This resulted in a right-of-use asset and corresponding lease liability, as well as a lease receivable and a deferred inflow of resources. Just to point out that we have, once again, issued a clean or unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which reflects that we performed our audit in accordance with all applicable professional standards and found everything to be fairly stated. We did not cite the district for any material weaknesses nor significant deficiencies in internal control. We did have one compliance finding this year relating to the school lunch fund. New York State requires that you maintain three months of average expenditures within the fund at a given time, and due to the reimbursement rates of the free lunch, the district, as well as most other districts, were in excess of that threshold.
may recall that New York State adopted new guidelines for concussion management and protocols that were incorporated into Policy 5280, interscholastic athletics, last December. As was the case with the prior policy we just spoke of, the verbiage there is now incorporated into the student health policy to remain consistent from policies to policies. Does the board have any questions regarding those minor changes? Okay, thank you very much. All of these policies will be placed on the December consent agenda. Thank you very much.
Again, thank you, Mr. Zakian, for your work on those policies and your efforts. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now, we turn to Mr. Defendini. May we have your monthly update, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Morales. Very quickly, I just want to take a second before the PTA and both our students have an opportunity to be more formal with regard to the thanks that we offer to our Board of Education. We do acknowledge the fact that what you do day in and day out, week in and week out, month in and month out, is based upon an entirely voluntary effort. There's no compensation for any of the efforts that you put forth, day over day, week over week, and month over month. We very much so appreciate your work. For those of you that might not know in the audience, this is a tireless job. There is lots of reading that's required as a part of it, lots of meetings that are required as a part of it. You're in the community day in and day out. You're hearing concerns that are coming from our constituents, and again, you're doing it for all the right reasons. And I, as the superintendent, thus as an administrative team, thank you. Obviously, Board Appreciation Week was several weeks ago. As part of this meeting, we have two different little opportunities to celebrate you. First, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Kate Kelly, our PTA Council President. The PTA will be coming up to offer their thanks and a little gift from the PTA for your service. Mrs. Kelly?
I don't know how to do it. I could just talk real, oh, that's good. Kate Kelly, I'm here tonight as president of the Farmingdale Council of PTAs, and with me are representatives from each of our seven units: Albany Avenue, Northside, Saltzman, Woodward Parkway, Howitt Middle School, Farmingdale High School, and SEPTA. We do not usually think of school board members as school volunteers, but you do, in fact, volunteer to serve. School board members give their time and energy for the betterment of our students. Public education is more than just the opportunity to learn basic math, science, English, and history. It's a platform for students to reach their full potential. It can inspire hope for a new generation of leaders and provide a foundation for a successful future. Tonight, we come together to thank the members of our Board of Education for their leadership, their commitment to our students and our community, and their support of our mission to continually improve the education of our students. It is a Farmingdale tradition that we thank you with a small gift of gratitude, and again, thank you for everything you do.
I'd like to just make a quick statement and just thank all of you who do the same amount of time volunteering to advocate for our students and putting together programs, bringing community members together, and teaching so many wonderful things about our community to our students. So, I think I speak on behalf of the board when we say thank you for this, but also thank you for everything that you guys do as well. We appreciate it equally.
And certainly not to be outdone, although it's hard when you're dealing with students, to not overtake any other thanks that you might have gotten from the PTA. But we have a group of students here with their parents that are also very excited to present the board with some letters and some gifts that they had made for you as well. Again, when we brought this idea to the building level, and we brought it to the teachers, and we brought it to the students, they were very, very excited to be a part of thanking you for what it is that you do, again, day over day, week over week, and month over month. So, without further ado, I'd like to welcome up the students to present Mr. Morales. If you could please stand up, Mr. Morales. Come in front of the dais. Ms. D'Amico, please come up. The students who are presenting to Ms. D'Amico, please join us on stage. The students who are presenting to Mr. Goldberg, can you please come up? And the students presenting to Ms. Lively, can you please come up on stage? Thank you, boys and girls. And the students presenting to Ms. Sodi, can you please come up on stage? And can the students or student, please presenting to Ms. Jones, please come up on stage? And last, but certainly not least, the student who's presenting to Mr. Giordano, please come up on stage?
Mr. Defendini, before you go on, I just want to thank all the children that came up. I know it was very difficult. My little pal, who came up, she was a little scared up there, but she said that she had a lot of courage. And I was asking her to wave to her mom, but she didn't want to wave. She didn't want to embarrass her mother. So, I think I see you now, Mom. Hello. But on behalf of the board, we do thank all of the children, all of the building principals for coming up. That was very sweet, very, very touching. We are touched, and it's a reminder, all of you children are why we're up here, to help you, to try to do the best that we can for you. And you guys inspire us, each and every one of you that came up here, all of your friends, all of your classmates, all of the teachers. You make this job enjoyable. You make this job worth it, and you make it something that we are very proud to do. So, thank you all so very much. Thank you to the children for all of your courage, and your smiles, and your fist bumps, and your handshakes. It was a very, very pleasant, lovable experience. We will never forget it. So, thank you all very much.
I'm just hoping there's tissues in the back. Thank you.
Okay, turning our attention, getting into the meat of the presentation this evening. And again, any students that are still in the crowd or absolutely, as we get into the order of business, can certainly depart. We thank you again, boys and girls, for taking the time, and that portion of the meeting is over. So, you can get in any last second studying and get to bed nice and early for school tomorrow, everybody. Thank you again. So, just one update from me. We have a presentation tonight as part of the work that we've been doing surrounding Portrait of a Graduate, the Board Goals. Really proud of some of the work that we're going to be talking about. Some of our staff is here to be a part of that presentation. So, I'm going to keep my comments short. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Zakian in just a minute to talk a little bit about some updates as we approach the end of the first quarter, just to give you, again, a feel of what's going on within our schools, make sure that you have a depth of understanding as to the dynamic, right? What's going on in our schools? What's the academic program like? How are activities running? What's the culture? What's the feel of our buildings? And I ask the principals again to report out to Mr. Zakian, so I'll turn it over to him in just a second to talk you through, you know, the culture and the academics and the activities that are going on in our buildings. But before we get to that, I just wanted to also report out on some of the work that we've been doing around shared decision-making. It's been one of the main goals of the Board of Education, is bringing back, in true-to-form fashion, our district-wide shared decision-making committee. We had our first meeting earlier in the school year, a few weeks ago. It was a tremendous meeting, an opportunity for us to get various stakeholders together, to talk through some of our goals, the commitments that we're making this year, those three commitments, which are going to come a part of everything that we do this year, and then to talk about the different ways in which buildings are going to be exercising their power and their authority to be able to run with some of those Board of Education commitments. Again, all of this culminating work and the meetings that were going to be happening, that are going to be happening over the course of the year are going to lead to a June presentation to the board. Our actual shared decision-making at the district-wide level will be the presenting body to talk about the work that was actually accomplished during the 2022-23 school year, to review data that was collected over the course of the school year, to show where progress was made, or, as we had said before, where we took a risk and tried to do something, but the data supports the fact that we need to get back at it again because we didn't get there. And that's okay, too, right? We want people to be able to take risks and feel comfortable doing that. So, again, first meeting is in the books. Very proud of that first meeting, that first conversation. There are more to come over the course of the school year. I will keep the Board of Education updated on that work. And again, culminating into that June presentation where you'll be able to really see the full body of work that's happened over the course of the school year, supporting Board of Education commitments that were made during the summer. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Zakian, who's going to briefly report out on some of the work that's been happening in our schools and sort of get you connected to the feel of our buildings and what's been going on since September in our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Defendini. And again, thank you to our building principals for contributing to this brief review. You know, the start of the 22-23 school year has been a welcome change, obviously, from the previous two years. Central Office frequently takes the opportunity to go and visit each of our schools, check in with the faculty, the staff, interact with everybody. However, we were really interested in the perspective of the buildings from their leadership teams, and we accumulated some of their insights I'd like to share with the board. When generally asked, what is the general culture within your building? We received very positive responses. Farmingdale High School Principal, Mr. Herman, responded that, quote, "The overall culture is wonderful. Students and staff report feeling a sense of pre-pandemic schooling and activities. The students are actively engaging in academics, clubs, and sports." He continued that the staff and students have reported a wonderful sense of calm in the building and have commented multiple times about the palpable change this year. Mr. Gavallas, our middle school, also stated that the culture at the middle school appears to be the healthiest it has been over the last three years, and the connection between students and adults is extremely positive at this point. Our elementary schools reflected similar sentiments, as Mr. Valentine stated that the culture at Albany Avenue is thriving. Our students are excited about school. And Dr. Klosk explained that the general culture at Woodward Parkway is overwhelmingly positive. Through the use of data and the resources provided by the building coaches and the teachers, they are tailoring their instruction to meet the needs of their students. In addition, the teachers have truly embraced Parent Square, and the communication factor with parents is much, much stronger and on a consistent basis that they're experiencing as well. We also asked the principals about how the students are responding to activities in, quote-unquote, "normal school days." And both Mr. Fabraro and Dr. Oregan said that the students are responding well with being back to normal. The students are happy. They're engaged in the school day. Although, we do have students who at times struggle in their return. All the buildings are working diligently to provide them with the proper support that they need to be successful. And Dr. Klosk further explained that the students are enjoying being finally back in a collaborative classroom experience and a positive learning environment, that student discussions, partnership work, small group learning experiences have truly made learning fun again for their students. Lastly, we inquired about the learning culture for the students. And the secondary buildings explained that they have seen students using the high school resources and accessing the support offered to them more frequently than ever. The teachers are reporting that students are more invested in their work this year and have a greater desire for academic success. After and before, school tutoring is very well-attended. The elementary schools echoed that, as they stated that their students' learning is thriving, as they've introduced new fun academic programs that the students are truly enjoying. Not lost on us is that the students, especially those who are in pre-K or kindergarten in March of 2021, are now in grade one and two, and this is really their first taste of what a pre-COVID expectation and the routines at the elementary level are. There's definitely work to be done in getting fully back to where we were, but the students are learning and happy to be in school. So, up to this point, it is clear and evident to all of us that our buildings are experiencing a very positive start to the school year. Thank you.
Any questions for Mrs. Zakian? Okay, just, yeah. Last item before we get to the presentation, and obviously, after the presentation portion of the meeting, we will open the mic for the first public participation. One more item, though, until we get to that, is a public participation comment from two months ago. I don't know if the Board of Education recalls, but there was a conversation at that time regarding recess, and some concern cited with regarding recess, how recess is used, when do they have it, consequences that are associated with recess. We spoke briefly afterwards, and we spent a good amount of time working with our building principals. On the issue, we spoke to the board about potential next steps, right? Where might we want to go with this? Is this a policy conversation? Is this more just a protocol-based conversation at this point in time to reconnect with the principals, just to make sure that we're, you know, aligning ourselves a little better? And after having a conversation with the board, I'll turn it over to Mr. Morales. I think the board has made a, or has a recommendation as far as our next steps?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Defendini. As a board, we did discuss these matters, as Mr. Defendini noted, and we've asked the principals of our district to get together to discuss the best practices surrounding the use of recess as a tool to ensure a safe environment and to make sure that parents are always aware of moments when recess may be taken away for any reason. We asked that any parental questions or concerns, if you have any, please direct them to your specific building principals so that your concerns can be heard and addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morales. And again, without further ado, the last portion of our meeting before we turn the mic over to public participation is a presentation. So, as you've become accustomed to doing, I would ask you to please stand, head out to the seats. We're going to drop the screen once you get out there and invite our staff members up, faculty up, for a presentation on three different important topics. Jeff, while Jeff sets up the projector and gets us ready, again, I'm just going to bring everybody sort of up to speed as to the nature of the work. What is this connected to? Why are we doing this? We see some, obviously, some new faces out there. This is part of a bigger conversation. This is part of a bigger process. Last year, the second half of the year, we had an opportunity to participate, our constituents had an opportunity to participate in a thought exchange, which helped to build in a thought exchange, which helped to build some pillars that we've been using, which we refer to as Portrait of a Graduate, right? The backbone by which these are the dispositions, these are the qualities that we are looking to build in all of our students. We also asked at that point in time that the Board of Education spend some time talking about goals and commitments. You came up with three commitments, three separate commitments that have been embedded in most all the work that we've been doing here as a school district. Today, we're going to be talking about specifically three other issues. I'm going to turn it over without further ado to Dr. Olson, who will introduce her team and who will go through a presentation on these three different support tools that we have available for our faculty and for our students.
Thank you, Mr. Defendini. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our curriculum highlight. We're thrilled to present to you today. Today, we're going to talk about a few of our initiatives that we've been very busily working on. And I'm joined today by our Director of Mathematics, Marissa Scaramamato, our six-to-eight instructional coach for math and science, Ginny Dalton, our math specialist, Rebecca Camera, Janice Pagliisi, and Will Marzalier, as well as our Teacher Center, our brand-new Teacher Center Director, Mrs. Bonnie McClellan. So the things that we're going to talk about tonight all are embedded in the belief system that was created, that Mr. Defendini spoke about at our September board meeting. It's all around our Portrait of a Graduate. Through the process of involving all our stakeholders, we have come to 10 characteristics that the community has valued in their graduate. Throughout tonight's presentation, I want you to see where many of these characteristics live. Our curriculum, it will be embedded with these Portrait of a Graduate characteristics. Additionally, Mr. Defendini talked about our commitments, our three major commitments. In October, Mr. Zakian talked about the third commitment around safety. Tonight, we have the opportunity to talk about these two. The importance of professional learning communities and looking at data so that we can better support our students, as well as strengthening community and parent communication. We're going to start with commitment number two. So I'm going to pass the mic over to our new Director of the Teacher Center to talk a little bit more about that.
Good evening. I'm Bonnie McClellan. I'm the proud new Director of our Farmingdale Teacher Center. As teachers, we understand the importance of not only the homeschool connection, but also the connection with our entire Daller community. We want to strengthen those supports and build relationships with all of our stakeholders. With that, we are excited to announce the planned following learning opportunities this year. We have three K-8 Math Parent Universities. We just had our first one last week that you're going to be hearing about tonight. Coming in the winter, oh, I'm sorry, the second one is going to be in January, and the third one is going to be in March. Coming up in the winter, we have the ever-popular Elementary Family Steam Night. This year, we're having ongoing teacher aide and monitor professional development, our wonderful teachers, aides, and monitors that work so closely with our students. And we're excited this year about our high school, our new high school student-teacher mentorship program. So a lot of great things coming up. We're very excited. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm the Assistant Director, or if you're an Office fan, Assistant to the Director for the Teacher Center. And I've had the privilege of being associated with the Farmingdale Teacher Center for quite some time now, and I've been able to watch a change and with the ebb and flow of education and being able to support our students and everything that we offer to them. We work on a lot of initiatives together, but one of the really important ones that we're doing right now that we're very excited with is our Parent University. We really wanted to reach back out into the community and make an extension from the home-to-school network and really see if we could make a nexus between the gap that experience that parents often experience when they try to help their children with math homework. So oftentimes, we really wanted to have parents see the best of the best, present some of the workshops. And our Parent University that we offered last week was a really nice opportunity for parents to come around and see some of the different ways that we teach the math, innovative ways, and maybe just have a more cogeon conversation with their children at the kitchen table about how they approach math, how they do it, and even have that cogeon conversation with parents as well, with the staff as well when they do that. So we've had a series of those. We had a workshop that went through. We had about 20 different course offerings that occurred last time. And through those course offerings, we offered a variety of different K-to-eight, K-to-eight different opportunities for parents to choose the different topics that they wanted to see. So we wanted to give you a little bit of a snippet of what it actually looked like, so we presented a little bit of a video montage for you. So we hope you enjoy.
And what I loved about it was that she had us do exactly what they do. So we were basically walking in their shoes.
I loved the use of the concrete and the way they did it with the number blocks, where they did it, the ones, tens, hundreds, and then broke it down into the different categories that you could do it, using the dots versus the actual blocks, because I don't have those at home. So that helped me, because I had learned math so many years ago, that breaking it down into that kind of pictorial view makes me better capable of helping them with their homework when they get home.
It's interesting learning how math has changed since I was in fourth grade. So good learning experience all around. So gives me a little leg up. This is going to be like our little bible, I think, for the next few years, really. But it's been good.
I think the most important thing was that the teacher stressed the importance of understanding concepts instead of drilling facts, because even if she gets things wrong along the way, as long as she understands what she's doing, the facts are going to come later. So that was, to me, very encouraging as a parent, that I can kind of take a step back and just let her learn and experience things, and the rest will come.
It ended up being a very organic conversation with the teachers in terms of just different math strategies and understanding that some kids, like for my son in particular, my youngest son, he latches onto one strategy and is content with that and may not necessarily want to learn the other strategies to solve a problem. And that's okay. So I don't have to stress myself out trying to force something on him where he's finding his niche. So that was helpful.
Things I can do online, on videos with him, using a rec and rack, even on an app now, instead of just having to bring one home or make one ourselves, using dice, rolling dice, and recognizing the number whenever we roll it, instead of having to count the dots, recognizing tallies, tally marks, and groups of five.
Parent University is just amazing. We got to learn different math skills and how to teach the kids different ways to understand the math concepts, and it really helped.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. It's really also, I looked at myself differently in the way I learn math and the way that I want to teach it. And I need to brush up on some skills. And this is a, this is a nice way to kind of, I'm a student. And so it's like that, it's that nice, you know, dynamic. It's cool. I really like it.
I definitely agree with these two. I think it was something that I needed to come and observe. And now I know what to teach myself, so I could be a better future educator.
Thank you. So tonight, we're going to talk about supporting all students in mathematics. There's going to be some themes that you're going to see throughout tonight. One of the major themes that you're going to see is the importance of providing opportunities for students to engage in productive struggle, so that as they grapple, they start to really identify with the mathematical practices and the relationships between the math that they're learning. You're going to see that throughout. One of the things that we've been very cognizant of this year is making sure that we can support our children so that they will be successful on the three-to-eight assessments. We want to increase the amount of students that are successful on those tests. And by really getting to know our students wherever they are, no matter what level they are at, we will be able to give them the personalized instruction that they deserve. One of the data points that you're going to hear about throughout tonight is a platform called iReady. iReady will provide us with the diagnostic data that we need to support the students throughout. There's a cycle that we use when we look at data, because we want to ensure differentiation for every student, no matter where they are. And through the opportunities that you're going to see tonight, you're going to hear about how we provide that extra level to the students that will advance, that are above the standard that they're working on, reinforce the standards for some other students, and then reteach for those others, going back into the standards that were prior, so that we can build a stronger foundation. You're going to hear about, one of the words that you're going to hear throughout this is assessment-capable learners. To us, that's one of the key pieces, because if you can take an assessment that can help you move forward and be reflective and set goals for yourself, you're giving them the tools for success for the rest of their life. So I'm going to stop talking, and I'm going to move and let the experts speak as they talk about the experiences that our students have in our K-8 supports.
Okay, so let's narrow the aperture a little bit of what we're going to be doing and give you a little bit of an inquiry lab introduction as to exactly what we do and what it looks like. So as far as the Math Inquiry Lab, it's a mathematical playground where students get the opportunity to explore mathematical thinking in a completely out-of-the-box way. It's a complete departure from the way that they might be used to in the classroom. And some of it takes some of the tools and the manipulatives that they have some access to in their regular classrooms, and we use that in a variety of different ways. Think lab, think workshop, think loud, engaged thinking. That's exactly what goes on in the Math Inquiry Lab. And if a picture, you know, gives a thousand words here, then this would be a million. You can see that the faces of the children have just an incredible experience as they come in. We try to keep the experience very light for them. We want them to be engaged, especially we want them to be excited about math. And so the entire experience for them is inquiry-based learning. We have a variety of manipulatives for them, a variety of tools, and we spend a lot of time having the children work together in those different differentiated groups, which we'll talk about more a little bit later. The students get the chance to be able to come into the lab experience in the very beginning. They work about five to seven minutes in a small class structure in terms of the being able to do a routine. The classroom teacher stays. So it's a really unique opportunity for the classroom teacher to take a backseat and be able to observe. And no matter how effective the teacher is, it's really helpful to be able to see your students on a different level and be able to observe them slightly differently. So we get to lead that lesson. We model a lot of the different types of math techniques that we want, and then hopefully they'll take that back to the classroom, and they'll embody some of the stuff that they've seen there.
Okay, so when the students come into the math lab, they're with their teacher, and we start with a shared whole-class experience. Can you hear? Okay. And one of the things that we start with is often a number talk. So this is what a number talk may look like when the students enter, and this particular number talk is actually a dot talk. And we start with dot talks even up through the middle school age, because we feel like it provides all students an entry point. No matter where they're at, every single child in that room can participate in this dot talk. So the task is that we tell the students that they need to tell us how many dots they see and how they see them. How do they group them? And you may have students that are still counting those dots individually, one at a time, and that's okay. But we want them to listen to their peers and hear the way that they saw the dots, so hopefully that will help them to grow their own thinking. So we thought it would be fun if we did a dot talk with you today, so hopefully you'll think that's fun as well. So does anybody want to start? How many dots do you see, and how do you see those dots? Meaning, how did you group them or count them?
I see five columns of dots. Four columns have three dots. One column has four dots.
Okay, so if we're moving up and down, so sometimes, and that's interesting.
Up and down, not across.
I got you. A lot of the times, the kids will look horizontally. Other students may look vertically, and that's a cool thing to point out to them. So Mrs. Jones just said that she sees the dots in columns, so she's looking up and down, and she sees that four of those columns have three dots, but then that one in the center has four dots. So what we would do as the math specialist is we would record what she saw. So we may write something like three plus three plus three plus three plus four, and then we would group those together. And then we would invite them to expand on their thinking. Okay, what did you do next? Maybe she did the three plus three and got six, another three plus three and got six. Maybe she added six and six and got 12, and then added four more. So we invite the students to keep going and share their thinking. And then we might say, okay, did anybody see it a different way? Did anybody group those dots a different way? Anybody see it different? Mrs. DiMica? Okay. Yeah. So it's interesting, because a lot of times, even when we do these with the teachers, we find that the K-to-two teachers will often see that centerpiece, because they work a lot with 10 frames with their students. So they may see that five and five make 10, and then they've got the three on the top and the three on the bottom. So we have 10 plus six more make 16. So it's a neat experience for the students, because they see that even though everybody approached it a different way and saw it or thought about it a different way, they all arrived back at the same answer. And as we move up, you know, a secondary student may see something that looks like this for a number talk. And what happens is the students that were comfortable moving the dots around and kind of playing with them and seeing them in a different way, they're more apt to do the same with the numbers and to start to move around a little bit. So can you just hop back to that previous slide? So a student may see something like this, and they may see, well, I didn't want to think about the 29, groups of six. I want to think about 30 groups of six, and then take one group of six away, just like they did with the dots. We have students that may start with how many dots there would be altogether, and then they remove the dots that are missing. We have kids that may do six groups of 20 and six groups of nine, and then put those pieces together. So it teaches the kids to be fluid and flexible with their numbers, and it really does improve their mathematical thinking skills. Okay, so once we're done with that shared experience, the students then move into their differentiated learning stations. And when they go to the tables, they're met with differentiated tasks. And the cool part about that is that all students, no matter where they're at in that moment, they feel like they're mathematicians. They feel like they're successful. They're all working at their own level. The kids are excited when they finish a task. They feel accomplished, and they love it. They enjoy it. They kind of forget that they're learning, and a lot of times, they'll even get so caught up in it that time's up, and they're upset that it's over. They want to stay longer, because they're so invested in trying to figure out the puzzle that's before them. And another cool part about it is that, oop, did we miss a slide? Go back. That, oop, sorry, I didn't see, switch it. Okay.
Just trying to be thorough. All right. So when we talk about every student being able to enter the lab experience at their level, we're really then talking about how do we manipulate that? How do we do that? And part of that comes from what Dr. Olson had talked about before. We do a lot of formative assessment. Sometimes that might just be an entrance ticket or an exit ticket. Sometimes it's something more formal, like you see up here, which would be like a formal pre-assessment of the concepts that they'll be seeing possibly in the next unit. So we basically take all of that data, and we do like this messy kind of sort. And we're looking for kids who have got it, who are almost there and not yet. And this goes back to the framework that Dr. Olson shared with you before, where she was talking about, we kind of always look at it at three levels. was talking about, we kind of always look at it at three levels. We're looking at that group of students who are already at grade level, maybe that just need to advance their learning. We're looking at that group who needs maybe a little bit more practice reinforcing topics. That's our almost-there group. And then we're also looking at those students who know they're just not there yet, and we're looking to see how we could reteach concepts so that they could acquire the skill.
And just to add to that, one of the things that we were able to do last year and this year with the introduction of iReady, which is a diagnostic for students, is that it adds another layer of assessment. And again, assessment is about, if a child is assessment capable, it means that we can assess them, and then from that information we get, we are able to make decisions about how to meet them where they are, whether it's supporting them or extending them. So with iReady, it adds another layer of data about our students so we can identify the appropriate groups for them, the appropriate level of work, so that we can help support them as we move them forward.
So what that intentional grouping might look like, whether you're at the middle school level or the elementary level, we share a common way of doing that. We like a lot of colors. Color coding helps us manage everything. So when you come into the classroom, there's always some kind of color wheel going on so students know where to find their tasks. And here's a few pictures of what that might look like in a middle school classroom.
Even though we plan for students to be engaged in our activity the whole time, we have to be ready because if students finish early, we want to make sure they're constantly engaged in mathematical thinking in the inquiry lab. So we always have challenge activities. It might be an extension of the activity that each group did. It may be a challenge board where they were given the answer, for example, and they have to create the problem, again, meeting the students where they are, allowing entry points for every student to have the opportunity to participate. My favorite part about the Math Inquiry Lab is the collective share at the end. Even though every group has a different numbers or differentiated task, they're all engaged in the same activity. So when we come back together, students are able to share their thinking. We're always asking them the why, not, oh, you added these together, but why did you choose to add these together? How did your strategies help you to grow your mathematical thinking?
And so we also have that shared experience at the middle school level. And something that's really important, you know, we've talking about having our students be assessment capable. Part of that is being able to take over that ownership to be able to reflect on your own learning. So at the middle school level, we really try hard for that collective share to really, for the students to really drive that collective share. And you can see, we try to use lots of vertical spaces, whether it's the blackboard, whiteboards, mobile whiteboards, just so that they could take ownership and shout out their findings.
So if you think of the classroom as like the embodiment of what we do, then differentiation has to be the heartbeat. Indeed, it's like what sets us completely apart from everything else that we're able to do. And we have an added advantage because we have more of an artificial setting where we have kids that are coming in and we have the entire classes coming in. So we can front-load a lot of that differentiation up in the very beginning. But really, what we focus on is differentiation in the moment. And that really is a nuanced kind of version. I think we can all speak, I can speak for everybody here when we talk about that, where when you work with students, you have to be able to read the room in the moment, and you're triaging students as they need. As indicated by the arrows here, you can see that students have the ability to flex back and forth through the groups that they're in. See, the groups that they're put in are predetermined, but they're fluid. So they have the flexibility to move from group to group, from week to week, maybe from a section that they might be struggling with, they might be achieving a little bit better the next week. But even in that 40-minute session, we have the ability to move them that way. And so something like this is just like a great snippet of it. We have like a balancing equations activity, which by the way, the hardest part of this is getting the kids to stop using the weights on this because they love using the balancing, the equations of the manipulative there. But here, you can see, the numbers are a little bit more simple. They're going to be able to balance something like that with using the weights very simply. And then obviously, we can just flex that up a little bit, make the equations a little bit more difficult, and have them come up with that finality. And of course, as we move up to the even more difficult levels, the numbers and the equations become just even a little bit more challenging. The other piece of that differentiation, though, that we do is that we always have some type of backup. We have something else for the students because sometimes students will struggle. There are things that we're not expecting to see. Things don't always go as planned. So we have to be able to flex in that moment and give students other opportunities. So here, we have a more open-ended differentiated activity where we just give the students the opportunity to make their own equation and balance, and that can be scaled up or down as needed. So that really gives us the advantage in the lab, and having the teacher watch that and be able to see what goes on gives the students a very unique opportunity in the lab that they don't oftentimes get in the classroom.
So this is actually a sample of a middle school inquiry lab-based approach. So what you will see here, the lesson itself revolves around ordering rational numbers on a number line. But if you notice, there's three different colors here, and there's subtle differences to the numbers that are being given to students. So we color-coded them for you so you can see the subtle differences between them. And again, students are grouped based on the data that we have and what their readiness is. Are they ready for more benchmark fractions? Are they ready to mix decimals and fractions? Are they ready to work with fractions that have unliked denominators? So you see here, three colors. That's just really to kind of show you the subtle differences between it. But you'll notice in this picture, this is actually the task that's happening. All students receive these numbers or these fractions on white paper. So they don't know that they have something different. They're all working similar to what everybody talked about up here. They're working on the same activity. They're ordering numbers, rational numbers on a number line. But the subtleties between the numbers that they're given is meeting them where they are so they feel success, but also they're still challenging them with the grade level expectation. And again, this is a picture from one of our sixth-grade labs actually happening.
We also use various formative assessments as well as the data from iReady in order to identify what students may need additional support. Once we identify those students, they're invited to participate in some small group learning sessions with us, the math specialists. And during that time, we can work with the students on additional manipulatives. We can give them more opportunities for some extra practice that they may need, and we do that in a nice, small group setting where they feel comfortable to ask questions and take risks and challenges. And, you know, they really, they love that time. They appreciate that time, and we see them really kind of come out of their shells a little bit and participate more so in that smaller group than maybe they would feel comfortable doing in a larger group setting. During this opportunity, during this time, they also have the opportunity to go back and maybe work on some previous units, maybe fill in some gaps, help them to build their number sense, not just the current unit of study that they're working on with their classroom teacher. And during this time, we may also even go ahead and maybe pre-teach some of the vocabulary or the skills that may be coming up so that when they see those with their classroom teacher, they can anticipate what's coming. They know what's coming. They're a little bit more confident going into it with their whole class when they've seen it before in a small group setting, and they've had a chance to work with those materials and topics ahead of time. Next one. Next slide. Wait, did I? I did that? Clicker's delayed, sorry.
Okay, so just as Ms. Pagliisi was saying, we offer that same support at the middle school level. So those students, when we go through all the data, looking like they need some additional support, will be invited to be included in small group instruction under the Academic Intervention Services Model, the AIS model. And again, here at the middle school level, we also would work on weaving in foundational skills, doing some pre-teaching when we can, and also reteaching concepts. And at the middle school level, that's going to alternate on every other week basis. So like one week, the whole class will push into the Math Inquiry Lab. On the off week, that's when the AIS small groupings will be pulled.
Specific to sixth grade?
Yes.
Specific to sixth grade. So one of the other things that we have at the middle school and things do kind of as our children transition from elementary school to middle school is that we have other supports throughout the day. So, and they're provided for all of our students, but they look a little different for each of our grade levels based on the structure of what our classes look like. So sixth grade, as Ginny had mentioned, there's Math Inquiry Lab, but then there's also that AIS component on an every-other-week basis. That's small group that looks very similar to our elementary schools. We also have in seventh grade, we have an A-Day-B-Day lab, similar to also at our high school, for our seventh-grade students who have been identified as needing a little extra support. We also have for some of our ICT and 15-1 students, we also have an A-Day-B-Day support class. In eighth grade, all of our eighth graders, whether they're in algebra or your typical eighth-grade class, have actually an A-Day-B-Day class within their schedule. So all students have a double period every other day. This year, we are fortunate enough, and I'm very grateful to our board, that we were able to actually add ENL support for our students. So our L population is increasing. And one of the things that we really, based on data and based on what we know, is that what was lacking is that our ability to help support our Ls specifically in math. So we have added an ENL math support every other day, and also our 15-1 support every other day.
So we're going to just share a few of those supports that happen outside of the school day that are not part of the student's scheduled day. So one of the things that we've been working on over the past, I guess it's like two or three years, right? It's been in the making, is that we have created this school-home partnership. This is available on our Farmingdale website, and it stems from the fact that we had gotten calls that said, you know, parents were like, I really want to be able to help my child. Like, how could I help them? What resources are available? So we've worked, like I said, over the course of the past two or three years, and we've created this website of resources. So for sixth grade specifically, we have a video library. In that video library is our own sixth-grade teachers, which are teaching instructional videos on the content that they teach in class. So this becomes a go-to that students can use when they're outside the classroom or when they're home. In addition to that, the videos that we have, they also have worksheets that go along with it to help guide the student through the video. In addition to that, we have unit resources, and that unit resource is a packet of important strategies, vocabulary, sample problems, practice problems that students can follow along with outside when they're out of the classroom so that they have that support. So we have the unit resources for grade six, and then we have unit resources for grade seven up through our algebra course. Another thing we offer here is we have a really well-designed after-school center where the extra help is really well-attended. We actually wound up moving the extra help for math back into the library, and I think on any given day, you were there the other day, there's anywhere between 35, even more kids attending. So that's great that they're able to take advantage of those services. We also offer early morning support. So as Mrs. Skier Mamanau mentioned before, we now have that wealth of having ENL support. So we can offer that before school starts for our English language learners, as well as we have now just finished our first session of pulling our Tier Two students that can get early morning support just in math. And then after Thanksgiving, we're going to be starting with our Tier Three students and giving them further support. Oh, this is me again, sorry. So another thing that we're very proud about is our reassessment as learning program. As Dr. Olson said, you're going to keep hearing the words "assessment capable," and what we're trying to do is we're trying to make sure that we give the kids the tools they need in order to be assessment-ready, but also to be able to be reflective thinkers through that process.
Just to add to that. So being assessment-ready, again, I'm just going to reinforce this because I think it's an important concept, is so that our students are able to articulate their understanding and that we as educators can take what we can from them and then make decisions on how to support them or provide extensions. Or, you know, we want to meet them where they are, but we need them to be able to get that information. So assessment, when we say that, it's everything. It's formative assessment, summative, how they do on their diagnostic, how they do on their classroom tests, how they do on their quizzes, how they perform on participation tasks. There's a lot, when we talk about being assessment-capable, it's their ability to articulate their understanding so that the educators can help support them wherever they are by meeting them there and moving them forward.
Thank you. No, that's okay. That's all right. So we framed this program with three tenants. We said that whatever we created, it was really important that we had some personal reflection going on for the student, that there was targeted learning, and that it culminated in this reassessment, this chance for students to demonstrate their learning that they couldn't have demonstrated prior on their end of the unit assessment. Oh, read the quote. Okay, here. We actually, we use this quote a lot in the math department because it really drives everything that we do, but it's "every student can learn, just not on the same day or the same way." And we honestly believe that. So what we've created here was we embedded, as I said before, some reflection. So in order to take part in this reassessment program, students are given a reassessment inventory, and part of that is that they have to reflect on their preparation for the unit that they just finished. So we ask them things like, have you reviewed your class notes regularly? Do you have a study buddy? Have you written your notes and practice problems during the class lessons? Do you ask questions when you don't fully understand? So these were like key things that we targeted, that we said if we can get kids to realize that these could be some helpful tips in order to be more successful, we can give them feedback on those areas that may have been concerned.
And they're very honest. So when you read them, they're really honest about what they've done, and they really are, and I know we talked earlier about data chats and how important it is to have conversations with kids, but they really are willing to share with you because they do want to know why they're struggling, or they want to know, how can you help me move forward?
Another piece of reflection that we have in there is that they look at their end of the unit assessment. And here, we're trying to drive home any patterns that they might see. So for example, one of the questions, this is all about taking your answers, seeing what you got wrong, and kind of categorizing, how did you get them wrong? So one would be like, I didn't understand or I was confused. I didn't pay attention to what I was doing. I skipped the problem. I ran out of time. Let's see, what was that one? I did not read the problem correctly. You know, sometimes they answer a question. It's just not the one that was asked on the test. It was the one that they thought was being asked, right? So in this case, this was good information for this student because they could see on five different questions, they lost points because they didn't show their thinking. They didn't show their work. So this becomes a tool then for the student when they engage in that reassessment, when they get that second chance at demonstrating their understanding, that they say to themselves before they take that reassessment, oh, my gosh, I got to make sure I show my work this time because last time I lost points on five questions because I didn't. So we've been talking, that was loud, sorry. We've been talking a lot tonight about iReady. So these next three slides are going to really focus on that and how it all comes together. So iReady really informs our data on our instruction from the data. Teachers can use it to form groups, see where students are, have misunderstandings to the standards that they're learning, and how to move them forward. So how do the students use iReady?
Is it terrible feedback? Is it just me?
Okay, thank you.
It's me. It is echoing. Okay.
So not only does it provide next steps for teachers, but it allows the student to engage in my path. My path is, it comes from the diagnostic that the students take, sees where their strengths are and where their weaknesses are, and then provides them with individualized instruction to support their learning. This is a huge piece for students to have continued success.
I was going to talk about, do you want to talk about them? Okay. One of the best pieces about iReady is a data chat, and this is a piece where a teacher sits down one-on-one with a student and talks about their, how they're doing, and holds them accountable, has the students reflect on the work that they're doing and how they're growing, seeing their successes, and really invests the student in wanting to continue to grow and succeed. Yeah, you could say anything.
So when I mentioned data chats before, as if you had heard about it, you clearly didn't hear about it because it's on the last slide. But the reality is, we did this. We did this in our middle school and our elementary schools, and you would think, you know, is my 10-year-old really like able or capable of having that conversation about where they stand? And if walking into the room to see a student having a conversation with a teacher about specific data was, it was enlightening. It was illuminating. It was every other adjective you can use to describe. I clearly can't come up with another word, but it was so great to see because our kids at every level, they want to know where they are and then how to move them. And sometimes that conversation, even, you know, when it's done with finesse, it's really, it's eye-opening for the child to think about, which also goes to our reassessment program, where do I stand? How do I do better? Or, I'm already doing great, like what's next for me? Because if they don't know or they never have those conversations with an adult, it's very hard for them to kind of find their place moving forward because we make a lot of decisions for kids, and it's important to keep them clued into how and why we make those decisions.
And that really connects to the portrait of a graduate. Those 10 characteristics that the community had shared were important to them. The importance of having that independent learner, right? Being resilient, being that problem solver, right? These are all embedded in all the learning that goes along with the data chats, knowing where they are, regulating themselves as learners. These are all embedded. If we start this, as we do, in kindergarten all the way up, that portrait of a graduate If we start this, as we do, in kindergarten all the way up, that portrait of a graduate will be living throughout the experience for our students.
And the last piece about iReady is the importance of students being vested, but the research and how it works. So, students who are below grade level are going to make progress. Teachers work tirelessly, the math specialists work tirelessly to support these students where they are. But as that student makes some growth, as do their peers, and the gap never closes. Sometimes, we hope it closes. And using iReady, students who spend more than 18 hours over the course of the school year, which you think about that from September to June, is not really that much time. We recommend, or iReady recommends 30 minutes or more a week in both reading and mathematics. They can make significant growth. I love this chart because it shows the average growth is the dotted line, but the white line shows how much more success students can achieve by using MyPath. So, that iReady is an integral part of how students' individualized instruction really supports their learning throughout the course of the year, and it meets the child to their highest level of readiness.
So, now, we want to invite you, our board, to see our math in action. We want to take you on a learning walk through our buildings, through K-12, on November 18th. And hopefully, the community will share out the next board meeting, so you can hear of what, what the notices that the boards had noticed across our K-12 curriculum, our classrooms, the interactions of our students' learning. And we want to put a shout-out that because of this setup, because it's so unique, all the supports that we provide in Farmingdale, New York City is coming, the Department of Education is coming to see us on the 30th, because they want to see what we're doing in Farmingdale. And they're not alone. We've been visited by Wantor, we've been presenting at conferences. They're really interested in what we do here, and we're extremely proud of it. And I truly believe, with the help of iReady and that personalized platform, every child can be successful where they are. So, I want to thank you for tonight. Does the board have any questions for us?
Thank you. Of course, we all want to thank you for coming here tonight and what you do daily with our students. So, thank you for coming and teaching us. So, I do have a question. You mentioned several times, which is great resources. And the resources we have, the resources during the day, the resources after school, are our students and our parents aware that we have so many resources? You said they were on the school website. Do, I know you can't, everyone can't, you don't know if everyone could be aware, but is it put out there so that we all know, especially the parents, that there's help there if we're not in the classroom?
So, I'm going to take a little bit of that. You're going to, no, Ginny, I want you to talk about the support part, but I also want to give a preview to the January board meeting. At the January board meeting, we're going to be speaking about curriculum transparency and the importance of having all our curriculum on our website so parents can see what their child is learning, really understand the scope and sequence of every course, of every grade level, every experience that your children have. Additionally, we're creating by the end of June for K through 5, three-minute videos that encapsulate the experience at each of the grade levels. And that will continue throughout the years by going into all our courses through the secondary level. And we want our students at those levels to help us create those media bites. So, I'm very excited about what the next three, four years brings, because I think the more and more that we're transparent with what the experiences our students are having, the better off our parents will be. But I'm going to let them talk a little bit about parent resources because we do have a plethora of resources for our parents. Hi, thank you. So, yeah, so we have it on the website. During Parent University, that was one of the sessions that we offered, was like how to navigate the middle school experience, and we walked through exactly where you could find those resources. In addition, our middle school teachers share that with their students, so they should have that page like bookmarked in their Chromebook so that they would know where to go. Lots of times, they plug themselves. They're like, "Oh, you know, if you're stuck at home, go look for my video." You know, you could see, and I'll teach it to you when I'm not around. So, we do have that. The unit resource that I spoke about, where in sixth grade, there was the companion of the video library. So, we're working on the video library for the rest of the grades, but for right now, all grades have that unit resource. That actually gets photocopied and is given to the students when they start a particular unit. And I always try to tell parents, you know, like, although like it's in there, we have like unit folders in the math department, we kind of coordinate it across grades that way. Some teachers use a binder, so it is in there. But we try to tell them that, you know, like, sometimes your child is going to forget their notebook or their binder in school. So, now you know that you can go on the website and you can still get the access to that same material.
And those resources for the middle school were developed from the need that we heard from parents two years ago, two and a half years ago. So, part of that was, you know, we needed to do better on how we communicate because it is a transition from elementary to middle school. So, in order to do that, we want to make sure that we are supporting our parents and our kids at home, so that they have access to all these things. And it's, they're really fun to watch. So, feel free to visit our website and check out Ginny talking on a video about math.
And just don't forget those dates about the Parent Universities, the Math Nights. We would love for you to join. We'll make sure that they're blasted out multiple times on Parent Square, so everybody is aware of those dates. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Again, as the board comes back on stage, just one more round of applause, please, for these amazing educators and the work that they've been a part of. Thank you so much for what you do every day, and thank you for taking the time to put this presentation together for the community. And just one last quick moment before we open up the mic, just to welcome two people in the audience. We've been talking about the importance of tenure and earning tenure over time. And the audience today with us is Gina Brienza, one of our family and consumer science teachers. Gina, can you wave? Congratulations. Gina joined us a number of years ago from another district where she had served for a while. We're very welcome to have you as part of our family. You're doing a great job. Thank you for everything, Gina. And also in the audience today, even though I don't see him, Ted. Wave, Ted. Is Ted there? There he is, hi. Maybe you can stand up, Ted. We talked about the departure of Brian Ernst, our school business administrator. Ted will be taking over as the treasurer in the coming weeks. So, again, welcome, Ted. You know, you know what the expectations are with regard to the business office around here, and thank you for jumping on board and doing a great job through the interview process. We appreciate it. And that's it for us, Mr. Morales.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Dr. Olson, and thank you to your team. Before we turn the mic over to the public, I just wanted to point out a few things. People oftentimes will come to the board meetings or hear about the board meetings, and they say, "You know, what's the narrative in Farmingdale? What are you guys doing?" And the narrative, I want everyone to understand, and I speak for everyone up on this stage, the narrative is a positive one. The Farmingdale School District is doing great things for your children. We are trying our best to be innovative. And when you look around this table, you look at Mr. Duffendini, and you look at this cabinet, these are the hardest-working people you would ever imagine. They are working tirelessly for your kids. The narrative, the narrative in this district is a positive one. When you look around what Farmingdale does, you look at our fine arts program, our music program, phenomenal. We have, we have children and young men and women who play instruments that they should be in Carnegie Hall. The concerts that we've seen are phenomenal. When you look at the artwork that our children create, I can barely draw a stick figure. And you look around these buildings, and all of our buildings, unbelievable. When you look at the rigorous courses, and you ask yourself, "Do I want my son? Do I want my daughter? Do I want my child to go to a great college? Do I want my child to have rigorous courses?" Farmingdale's got it. We have it for you. And it's proven. When you look at the colleges that our kids go to across this country, absolutely amazing. When you think about the scholarships that our kids have achieved over the last number of years, absolutely amazing. Farmingdale is a wonderful district. When you, when you ask yourself, "Well, you know what? My son, my daughter may not want to go to college." Well, we have a CTE program where you can learn trades. Farmingdale's got it. Kids come out of this school, and maybe they say, "You know, I don't want to go to college. I want to learn a trade. I want to work with my hands." They learn that here. They get that training. They get that practical experience. We have kids that go into the military and serve our country. They learn the values here in Farmingdale. And you look around at the sports programs that we have, our football team, our volleyball team, our swim team, our baseball team. When you look at the athletic fields in the aquatic center that you and the community granted to us through the bond, state-of-the-art. No one touches Farmingdale when it comes to that. Amazing opportunities for our kids on the fields of play and in the classrooms. Now, that's not to say that we're perfect, right? We have room to grow. We want to get better. You could say, "Well, you know what? That's great, but you know, we want our grades to be better. We want our kids to do better on Regents exams." And everyone shares in that. If you think I'm up here saying that we're perfect, and that we've achieved and we're done, we're not. We're not. Do we have room to grow? Absolutely. Can we be better? Absolutely. And the best thing about that is, when you look around this table at the board and at the cabinet, everyone wants to get better. Everyone understands that we can do better for your children, and we are inspired to do better for your children. You know, my grandfather, he was not the smartest guy, didn't have the greatest education. He grew up in Jamaica, Queens, and he worked with his hands, Carmine Santinello. And my grandfather Carmine would say, "If you ain't failing, you ain't trying. If you ain't failing, you ain't trying." And it's true. If you aren't failing, you aren't trying. Do we fail? Sure. We're not perfect. The district isn't perfect, but the district sure as hell is trying. The district is trying to do the best it can, to be as innovative and as vanguard as they can for you, for you parents, for your children. That's what this district is about. Do we need to improve? Yes. You look around this table, everyone wants to improve. No one is resting on their laurels. But that's the narrative. The narrative is a positive one, and I hope that you all understand, when you hear the presentation that Dr. Olson just gave and the directors just gave, that's amazing. What these children are learning, what they, what they want to learn, and they're excited about learning. That's not something you learn across the, when you look around this country, when you look around this state, that's not normal. But we're trying. We want our kids to be better. We want our kids to think differently. And our kids are in an innovative program. We are offering state-of-the-art programs, and in many ways, Farmingdale is a vanguard of a new way of thinking about how to educate kids. We are on the cusp of greatness here. That's the narrative. Farmingdale is a great institution. Farmingdale is a great place to learn. Farmingdale is a great place to live. Farmingdale is a great place to make friends, and your children will benefit from what these amazing leaders are doing for your children. And I say that when I look around, if I would ask each one of our cabinet members, if I would ask our superintendent, "What do you think?" They're very humble. They say, "We got a lot of work to do. We can be better." But I'm telling you, they are amazing, and they all deserve our applause, they all deserve our thanks, because they're working non-stop, non-stop for you. So, I want to give them a round of applause because this is a wonderful place to be. And that's the narrative. Now, there's also something I'd like to discuss again before we open the mic to public participation. It has to do with an issue which is becoming much more vocal in this community. It has to do with the pride flags in our schools. And there's been a question, "Why are pride flags allowed in our schools?" And I just want everyone to understand, this district pines for the day when there is no need to fly such a flag, because that will mean that we have accepted and respected children from the LGBTQ+ community as part of our Daler community, rather than ostracize and malign them. The pride flags are permitted in our schools to counter agendas of misinformation, to curb disturbing efforts to dehumanize children due to a lifestyle choice, and to halt contempt for these children and the LGBTQ+ community. We want the children in our public school district to respect and accept these children for who they are and for what they choose. We are not asking our students to do any more than that. We are not mandating that our children agree with other children's perspectives. We are not saying that one perspective has more merit than another. The district and the board are not grooming children. The children of our district are free to believe whatever they wish, and they do not have to agree with the perspectives of peers who have different belief systems or approaches to life. They do not have to be friends with each other. All we ask as a district is that our students accept each other as fellow Dalers and treat each other with the respect and the dignity that they deserve. The pride flag is the district's way of saying to children of the LGBTQ+ community that we accept them for who they are, and that we will not discriminate against or hate them for choosing a lifestyle. It is not, excuse me, excuse me, it is not a method to marginalize other children. However, if the flag does cause other children to feel marginalized, then we encourage those children and their parents to speak to a teacher, a dean, a social worker, a guidance counselor, a principal, or a member of the administrative staff about their feelings. Our schools are equipped to handle such matters and will do so in a very personal, caring, and thoughtful manner. We want all of our children to understand that we can have a mature, respectful conversation about our beliefs. We want all of our children to understand that it is perfectly fine to disagree and to debate, as long as, as long as it is done from a commonplace of respect and decorum. The district and the board are trying to counter the angry views that can cause LGBTQ+ children to fall into the crosshairs of the logical hatred and dangerous rhetoric. The district exhibits great courage in standing up to baseless attacks, and it exhibits greater courage as it forges ahead in service to the educational and the social-emotional needs of all of our children in the face of a torrent of unsubstantiated claims, hyperbolic conjecture, and persistent attacks. We will never waver from our mission statement as it pertains to the education and well-being of our children, and we will never leave a child without the support that they deserve. Now, at this time, I'd like to open the meeting to the first public participation session. I just want to remind everyone that when you come to the mic, your comments should be directed at the board. You may not address each other. There cannot be crosstalk amongst members in the audience. We ask that, when you speak, you do not bring up specific personnel matters or issues that are specific to any individual child or administrator or teacher in this, in this school district. Please speak with respect, and you will be heard. We want to ensure that you are heard, that you speak, and that you respect other people's rights to speak. Please be sure to clearly state your name and address when you come to the microphone. Please note that Mrs. Rogers will hold the time clock for the three minutes available to each speaker. And as you just saw, she will have a 30 minutes remaining sign, a 30 seconds remaining sign, sorry, that she'll hold up to allow you to understand that you have 30 seconds to conclude your comments. I thank you all in advance for your understanding, for your cooperation, and for your respect, not only for the board, more importantly, for yourselves and for your fellow Dalers. At this time, the mic is open for all of you.
Good evening. I'm Matt Wilson, and my address is on file. I'm a father in the district. My question is addressed to- Uh, my question is addressed to Dr. Olson. Dr. Olson, thank you to you and your team for the thought you put into making math innovative. Um, your team used the reference assessment ready, assessment capable several, several times, but no reference to standardized testing. Do you consider standardized testing a part of your measure about whether we're giving the resources needed for the kids to improve or not? And before you do, I just want to share a personal experience at Northside Elementary. It was probably the year before COVID. There was a huge, huge truck on state property next to Northside, uh, arranged by organized labor. It was either the Farmingdale Federation's, the Teacher Union, or NISIT, and it was just huge opt-out sign. And I just want to see if the administration is on the same page with the Farmingdale Federation of Teachers and the PTA directly that are often encouraging not to participate in standardized tests, which I know are not popular, but feels like one of the only ways to really know how we're standing.
Can I address that, Mary? Is that okay? Yeah, okay. Hi, hi, Mr. Wilson.
I'm sorry, Jen, just one second. Mr. Wilson, if you have other questions, you'll want-
No, ma'am. Okay, thank you. Just about how we'll measure success with the new innovative math program.
So, uh, I agree with you, Mr. Wilson. We need to look at our three to eight assessments, and we have been, uh, just early October. My elementary principals and my middle school principal and I attended our IDW training, which is through NASOBOCSIS where we analyze the data. We analyze how students have done in a general sense for each grade level, as well as we dive all the way down into the data to each individual student, analyzing the test at each question. Um, just this past week, um, I sat with all the instructional coaches for, uh, actually even from K to eight because I wanted to make sure that K to two understood what the test looks like. Last year was the first year in many years that we actually graded our own tests. Uh, that supports teachers in understanding the test. Teachers are supporting their kids in taking the test. Uh, teachers have worked tirelessly to ensure that they're supporting their students, they're knowing where they are needed, and, uh, we, we do want our students, uh, to take the test. However, we do believe that it is a parent's right to choose if they want their child to take the test or not.
Do you have a certain target in mind that will know if we'll just arrange or something? Or-
In, in terms of what? I'm sorry.
Uh, in standardized testing? We're just below a lot of our neighbors based on some of the, there's different sites that just compile the state testing, and we're just, we're behind Old Bethpage. We're behind our neighbors despite having higher T-shirt ratios. Just how do we know when we move the needle? And do we have a target in mind?
Uh, each, each grade level has, are different targets. Each building is at different targets, so that's hard to say a certain percentage.
Sure.
But we really are analyzing each student. Uh, next year, uh, will be the year when, uh, designations will be based on that data. Uh, so we will be looking at every, every individual child's growth. Um, so, uh, again, just like the iReady data chart showed, it's based on each individual child, and we drill down to each individual child. So that percentage will change for, um, from one child to another, and we want to make sure that each child finds success.
So a lot of use of iReady internally without?
I, we triangulate data. We use iReady data. We use summative data from our unit assessments as well as our formatives, as well as the state tests. Um, there's a triangle that we use where standardized tests are on the top, and in classroom, formatives are on the bottom because that's the larger part of the, uh, triangle. That's where you really get to deeply know the students by understanding how they're doing day by day, moment by moment in the classroom. And Will really talked about that a lot tonight, about the importance of being flexible in that moment. Um, so we are committed to that. Our teachers are committed to that. Our administrators are deeply committed to that. Um, and I, and I look forward, as I said before, to the next three or four years of the growth that we will see here in Farmingdale.
Thank you, Dr. Olson. If I could squeeze in one more, is there any consequence of performance management if a teacher's classroom is far, far behind their peers that we can give those kids an opportunity for a higher performing teacher? Or is there no way out of that?
Every teacher is evaluated in this district. Um, we do have an APPR plan that, uh, Dr. Thompson has been working with our teachers on.
Okay.
Um, so yes, we do have a, we do have a teacher evaluation system.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Kathleen Gagin, 169 East Drive, North Massapequa. I am a teacher at Salzman East Memorial. I am the Farmingdale High School Junior Varsity Cheerleading Coach, and I come to you this evening as the Second Vice President of the Farmingdale Federation of Teachers. On October 16th of this year, um, Team Farmingdale walked at the Making Strides Breast Cancer Walk at Jones Beach. That team consisted of students, my cheerleaders, board members, teachers, community members, security guards, Dr. Thompson, his two children, Mr. Defendini, our superintendent, and his lovely daughter. We walked together and had a great time. We raised awareness to breast cancer that has touched the lives of so many people that we know dearly. I'd like to say that we raised $3,000, and I welcome the community to be a team with us in the future because team is together, everyone achieves more. Thank you.
Uh, good evening. My name is David Kilnick, Dr. David Kilnick. Uh, my address is 125 Kennedy Drive, Hopag, New York. Uh, my pronouns are he, him, and his. And I'm here tonight as, um, as the, a founder and president and CEO of LGBT Network. And I'm here to set the record straight, right? Because I did hear at the last board meeting, there were members of Long Island Loud Majority, which is a Southern Poverty Law, um, Center-designated hate group that was here reading a script, throwing dog whistles and old stereotypes, um, about LGBTQ people. Um, also here tonight to speak on behalf of the dozens of teachers, students, and families who have reached out to us about the fears of what's happening at the Howitt Middle School to LGBT students and teachers. So I think what's important is to talk about, and I'm here to set the record straight. Any questions you have about the LGBT Network? I started the organization 30 years ago, have been its president and CEO, so ask me, I'll give you any answer, I'll give you honest answers to everything. I don't know why I'm shaking a little bit. But I think what's important to understand is we're an educational institution. We heard a lot about a math university, um, and it's important to understand the facts, right? And the data. And so let's talk a little bit about math. That LGBT youth face unsafe schools every day filled with bullying, harassment, and violence. A 2002, uh, 2021 report showed that 52% of LGBT young people enrolled in middle and high school reported either electronic or in-person bullying in the past year. Bullying in unsafe school environments affect academic success and mental health for LGBT students. LGBT students who are victimized for their sexual orientation and gender identity are more likely to miss school, have lower GPAs, not pursue post-secondary education, and have lower self-esteem. And the bullying is dangerous and deadly. LGBT students who reported being bullied in the past year had a three times greater odds of attempted suicide in the past year. Now, these statistics, behind these statistics are real people. Behind these statistics are your students. Behind these statistics are your children. Now, we know what we can do to help create safer schools. The study also showed that LGBT students who reported their school to be LGBT-affirming, not merely just accepting, but supporting and nurturing, had 30% lower odds of being bullied in the past year. There was a 20% reduction in attempted suicides when LGBT students attended affirming schools. Bottom line, schools that are LGBT-affirming are safer for LGBT students. One way to be LGBT-affirming is to include LGBT education in the classroom, something that the LGBT Network has been doing since its inception nearly three decades ago. So here's what we need to do to create safer schools for LGBT youth. We need additional education and awareness needed to prevent and stop bullying. There needs to be more education programs, and we need to make sure that the Howitt Middle School GSA stays, and we do not go backwards and take down stickers that say "safe spaces" By ripping down the "safe space" stickers, which was done in Howitt Middle School.
Mr. Kilnick?
Yes, I'll be, I'm, just have one second. That's it.
Okay, you do have, you do have the opportunity to come back. I don't want, I, just so you know, okay? I don't want you to feel that we're-
Sure, I only have like just one, one more thing to say. Uh, by ripping down the "safe space" stickers that were up is creating unsafe spaces that will clearly have a target on LGBT who, young, LGBTQ young people's backs and blood on your hands. Let us continue to help you as we have been for, as we have done for nearly three decades with the support and education that is needed to create safe spaces for all. We could come help you to understand it's not a lifestyle. It's not a choice. And we could help you understand that love is not the problem. Hate and ignorance is.
Hello. Um, my name is Dr. Kerry Spooner. I'm an educator. I'm a mother. I'm raising a nine-year-old with my wife here. I want to thank you for the work that you do. I know it's not easy. This is a volunteer job. I imagine you disagree with one another. I imagine you'll be disagreeing with me, um, and President of the Board, sir. Who I love isn't a choice. I will consider that, I'm sorry, a productive struggle you may be working through. I'm inspired by Farmingdale School District's mission statement. It says, "We acknowledge that there are certain basic principles that shall guide the Board of Education in its actions and activities on behalf of our students and on our community." The mission of the Farmingdale School District is to educate our students to become independent thinkers and problem solvers. It is our goal to empower each student to meet the challenges of tomorrow's emerging world. The district will provide a safe, the district will provide a safe, nurturing environment in which all individuals in civic responsibility is fostered, diversity is respected, diversity is respected, and all students are enabled to realize their full potential. So having hopes and dreams seem an inherent part of parenting, I have found, but when people in positions of authority venerate hate found tucked in the coercive rison of misinformation and faulty logic, sometimes it's difficult to keep hope alive. But when respect for demagoguery is held by those who determine policies and practices in our school districts, then hope is no longer a luxury my wife and I can afford. So saving, save, saying something like this, I wish the LGBT community, primary and secondary school students, were not bullied for simply being. I wish LGBTQ primary and secondary school students were not harassed for being. I wish LGBTQ primary and secondary school students were not discriminated against for being. I wish LGBTQ primary and secondary school students were not punished for being. Saying this isn't enough. They face discrimination and bullying and harassment at school from their peers and then punished for their own victimization for attempts to defend themselves in a hostile school and climate. They're punished for engaging in adolescent behaviors for which their non-LGBTQ peers are not. I've barely raised a topology of the LGBTQ youth experience. I'm going partly on memory, my memory, and partly on what I hear and witness today. We know kids are coming out at younger ages. They're coming out before they have the emotional skills to engage in the rhetorical and physical violence that no doubt is coming. The reality is that the LGBTQ young people are met with hostility and violence, rejection, and together with the lack of supportive services and the use of zero tolerance policies create unsafe school environments. The confluence of this negative feedback creates the conditions that lead to depression, self-harm, and suicide. The Center for American Progress and Movement Advancement Project point out, compared to other students who experience bullying at school, LGBT young people who are bullied and harassed at school often experience more severe consequences, including school discipline, risk of substance use, mental health challenges, missed school, thought of suicide.
Excuse me, ma'am. I'm sorry, we'll have another opportunity. We just have to try to keep every person for three minutes. Well, you can come up again. I'm not saying you're, you're done for the evening, but I do want to move on to the next person.
Okay, I'll just finish your sentence and I'll come back up. Okay. Thoughts of suicide and lower aspirations to attend college. I'll come back.
Thank you so much for providing me with the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Christine Pellegrino. I'm here as a member of Long Island Pride PTSA's Executive Board. I'm also a former New York State Assembly member, used to represent this community in the New York State Assembly. It's really good to be back at Howitt. My father was a teacher here for many years, and shout out to the Teachers Association, teachers who are still here. As I said, I'm here as the Vice President of Long Island Pride PTSA's Executive Board. I'm their Vice President, um, and I'm here to show solidarity and support for the students and families who are concerned about the removal of LGBTQ plus signage in Farmingdale. Long Island Pride PTSA believes that students everywhere should have the freedom to learn in safe and welcoming environments. We believe that kids deserve an environment that acknowledges and affirms them for who they are so that they can go about their business of getting the most out of their time in school. As educators, we understand that, um, through Maslow's, um, hierarchy of needs, their safety concerns should always prevail. And when they don't feel safe in school, nothing else can happen. Long Island, uh, Pride PTSA is committed to increasing diversity, ensuring a safe, inclusive school and community environment that provides access to age-appropriate, educationally sound resources, which affirms lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer questioning identities, um, and supports the social, emotional, and academic needs of LGBTQ plus children, youth, and their families. The mission of Long Island Pride PTSA is to address the specific needs of all children, youth, and families of the LGBTQ plus community and the educators who serve them across Long Island who might otherwise be overlooked or discounted by the local dis- school districts. We aim to advocate for the LGBTQ plus students first and foremost. This includes, but is not limited to, uh, working to ensure that students' physical, mental, and emotional needs are met, that they have an emotional support systems, that they have a loving community, and that they are seen as valued members of their school communities. The PTA nationally believes that schools must be a safe and supportive environment, um, and that, um, you've heard studies that show that particularly the LGBTQ plus, um, community, uh, youth have alarming rates of, um, suicide attempts, which points to an alarming trend, which we need to be especially concerned about in our schools. Um, as it relates to the, to the, um, the stickers and the postage, which may not seem like much of a big deal, but for, for kids who are in school and are just looking for a lifeline, this may actually be the one thing in school that keeps them connected.
Ms. Pellegrino, I'm sorry, again, the, the three-minute limit. You have another opportunity to come up to finish your thoughts. I don't want you to rush through it now.
Sure, and I'll be, I'll be finished as soon as I make the last statement. Um, this is a big deal for them. This is a big deal for them, and this, these signs could be their absolute lifeline. We want them to be in school. We want them to stay in school, and we want them to get the most out of their school.
Ms. Pellegrino, again, I'm sorry. We, you can come up again, all right, the second time, but we have to move on. I'm sorry. You have to stop now, okay? You'll have another opportunity. I'm not saying you're not, you're done for the evening, but we, we do have to move on because we only have 30 minutes for the first public participation session. I, I promise you, you can get back up at the second time and finish your statement, okay? Okay? But we do have to move on now.
Sure. The last thing that I'm gonna say is that we-
No ma'am, ma'am, I'm sorry. We really have to move on now.
We urge, the Long Island Pride PTSD urges-
Ms. Pellegrino, I'm sorry, we have to move on.
I, I understand, but I have to leave, so I'm gonna make the last statement. Thank you so much for your understanding. The Long Island Pride PTSD urges the Board to take action to ensure that the stickers are allowed to go back up in the schools, especially at Howitt. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pellegrino.
This won't be three minutes. First, I want to thank you. I want to thank, I want to-
Sorry, I think you spoke earlier.
This is the second time.
Sorry, we're not in the second public participation session.
Oh, second public session. Okay, thank you.
Assalamualaikum. That is Arabic for peace be upon you. The response is, "Laikumsalam." I am a Latina, and I am very happy to see un Latino ahí mismo corriendo una escuela que es muy importante. I hope you understood that. Do you speak Spanish, the President?
I understand that my speaking ability is not as good as my Spanish ability.
So, my name is Lisa Eggy Saval. I live in Patchard, and I know that the school district follows open meeting laws, which apparently some of your residents don't seem to know how those laws work. So I think maybe they should get an email so to explain that-
I'm sorry, I'll let you finish, but let's try to just maintain the common support.
Okay, no problem, no problem. So the reason why I'm up here is not only to support the LGBTQ community in what was happening in your school district, but I also saw the video from the October 12th where a gentleman named Parsha Karimi-
Again, ma'am, I can't have you address individuals. I have to-
He's not in the board.
Ma'am, I have to stop.
Okay, so I just wanted, one thing that I wanted to, I wanted to bring up is the fact that the gentleman that spoke at the last meeting, who has mentioned that if, um, if the school district was handing out turbans in support of Muslims, that a lot of people would be offended by that, I guess he's unaware that not all Muslims wear turbans. I was married to a Muslim, a Turkish Muslim, and they do not all wear, um, turbans. And, um, the other thing too is that was, was alarming, that he said that children don't see color. So I'm gonna tell you from my perspective as a Latina and as a, a mother of, um, black Latinos, when you, when whites do not see color and they say that they don't see color, even though Mr., Mr., whatever his name is, is not white, although he may try to whitewash himself, what happens is is that you're denying, you're denying our existence.
I can't have you do that, ma'am.
You're denying-
One second, I'll let you finish. Just please, one second, for everybody. First of all, we, we cannot talk about specific individuals. That's why I'm cutting you off. Um, it's not permitted pursuant to the-
Okay, so I won't mention his name.
Secondly, I'll, I'll let you finish. But secondly, I would ask that everyone else, please, I don't want it to become a situation where everyone's yelling at each other, because then the meeting may have to end, and I don't want to do that. So let's try to be respectful of each other. Everyone will be able to speak, but we have to speak in accordance with the rules, and you can't mention people. You can't make any specific comments about any individuals, okay?
Okay, I won't make any specific comments about any specific person. So what happens in white fragility, when it's confronted and, and actually approached and straight and called out, it, it gets offended. Because what happens when you do not see color, you're denying the existence and the trauma and the personal experiences of people of color. To me, it is offensive when someone comes up here and says, "My children don't see color." That is a wrong thing, because you're not identifying with whatever color you may be, or trying to hide from whatever color you are. My children are, have a right to be seen. Black children have a right to be seen. Hispanic children, indigenous children have a right to be seen, and their experiences should be seen. It should not be hidden. And I would recommend that the Board maybe consider bringing some kind of cultural sensitivity auditoriums to each of the school districts to maybe expose the other children's to other cultures. We have, um, uh-
Ma'am, I have to have to cut you off, because it's been three minutes, but you'll have an opportunity to come back up in the second public participation session. And you have, ma'am, can you take the sign from the microphone also, please? I'm not sure if that was yours or somebody else that left it there.
Hi, Jessica Bany, 168 North Hickory Street. I'm pleading with you, the Board, to protect the rights of our LGBTQ plus students. I have seen firsthand the benefits of the GSA Club at Howitt Middle School. This club, its men are, members, and its advisors gave my child a safe space where he was able to gain courage and support. It was now and at, now, it was then and now at the high school, his safe space needed to feel protected in his school environment. His mental health was protected as a result of this club. While in his school environment, the actions of both his peers and adults force him to face situations that make him uncomfortable every single day. Imagine feeling uncomfortable in your own skin on a regular basis, and that, and add in not feeling comfortable in your own school. If you were, if it were not for these safe spaces in his school environment, his life would be drastically different. I'm asking you for, for you, our Board, to take into heavy consideration the effects that our LGBTQ plus youth are facing as our district continues to meet the demands of parents. The elimination of the GSA at the middle school, not acknowledging Coming Out Day, and removing safe space stickers on our classroom doors. These demands are both discriminatory toward and detrimental to the well-being of the students who probably need to be protected and supported the most. As I'm sure you are all well aware, the rate of suicide is drastically higher for these students. If the support we are offering in the schools is helping to save one child, then that would have been well worth it. Again, I'm asking you for you to stop reducing the support for these students and to start protecting them. We should be creating school environments where all students are feeling accepted, loved, and supported. Thank you.
Ms. Bany, before, before the next person comes up, I just want to make sure you understand there, there is no plan to abolish or to disband GSA. It's a club like any of the club in the school. So I'm not sure if you're hearing anything on, on the outside, but I can assure you that that's not a fact. The GSA Club, just like any of the club in, in our schools, is here. Nothing's being done to, to limit it. Nothing's being done to disband it. Nothing's being done to abolish it. It's here, and it's not going anywhere. I just want to make sure you understand in case there's been any misinformation disseminated that you may have heard.
Hi, my name is Joe Roder. Um, I was blown away by the math presentation. I Ready, and I was thinking, wouldn't it be wonderful to put that energy into something called I Belong? Uh, they showed so many diverse ways to, to count the dots. No right way. They all came, they're all dots, right? The same number of dots. Imagine teaching the many diverse ways to see children. No right way to see a child. See a child, a boy who identifies as a girl, a girl who identifies as a boy. See a, a child with two fathers, two mothers, one mother, whatever the case may be. Um, they also said it was a safe place to teach math to children at all levels. And all we're asking for is a safe place for students at all stages of their growth. They said it, it started in kindergarten. It was most effective, the math. I, I believe the same thing with our child. You can't start too young. Um, it also, I Ready says children and parents shouldn't fear math. And I don't think parents or anyone else should fear sexuality whatsoever. Um, David touched on statistics. Math is based on statistics. So let's look at statistics, suicide statistics. You had mentioned education, you know, how, how great the school is doing. You want to get better, you know, go on to colleges. Um, that's all great, but how about humanity is the core. It's, it's not so much going on to college. It's, it's living together with each other. Um, you said to think differently, be the vanguard, and a lifestyle choice. I mean, think of that deeply. And you may, may have just said it. I, I don't know, but think of how offensive that is. Imagine saying to a person of color, "Well, you know, if you choose the lifestyle of a person of color, you know, you deserve what's coming." You know, no one, no child in their right mind would choose to be gay or bisexual or anything else in this society, ever. Thank you.
So that's 30 minutes.
Okay, so that's going to conclude the first public participation session. Again, there'll be a second public participation session of 30 minutes in a couple of minutes from now. Thank you all for your comments. I call for motion to approve the October 12th Board Minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 12th, 2022 regular meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I call for motion to approve the minutes of the October 19th meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 19th, 2022 special meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mrs. Rogers, have we received any correspondence this month?
So, thank you, Mr. Morales. Um, during the past month, the Board received an email, um, asking that a particular family's, um, children opt out of the district's mood meter initiative. There was an email thanking the district for the work associated with the Coming Out Day program. There were several emails regarding the positive impact of the GSA Club on middle school students and the support it provides to LGBTQIA students. There was a request, um, for more parent-teacher conferences throughout the year. Uh, there was a request that the Board support the New York State School Board Association resolutions related to local control. And, um, finally, there were, um, several emails, probably a dozen, regarding recess policies.
Thank you, Mrs. Rogers. Are there any committee reports from Board members?
I just have one. Um, so the Farmingdale Chamber of Commerce, um, is, is sponsoring and helping out with Veterans Day Ceremony. It'll be held on Friday, 11/11, at 11 o'clock in the Village Green in Farmingdale. The Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 516, VFW Auxiliary Post 516, and American Legion Post 49449, excuse me, invite all to, to thank and honor our military veterans, those who served in the United States Armed Forces. All are welcome. Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the meeting for the second public participation session. Again, the same rules apply. Please be sure to state your name clearly and your address when you come to the microphone. Mrs. Rogers, who's to my right, she'll have a, a sign that says 30 seconds. Please keep an eye out for that. I'm going to try to keep everyone to three minutes so that we give everyone opportunities to speak. If you hit the three-minute mark, I'm gonna stop you. Again, not to be rude, not to be nasty. I'll just have to stop it, just to move it on, so that we can keep our, our meeting going in an orderly fashion. All righty, but ma'am, you're up at the mic. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Nila Mazzata, and I live in the Farmingdale District. I think my address is on fire. Um, I am better known by a nickname, Little Six Boys. Yes, I have six boys, six beautiful boys. I have been a resident of Farmingdale for about 23 years. This is a totally different topic than everybody else. I forgot to mention that. And those, I've been a resident of Farmingdale for about 23 years. In those years, four of my boys have graduated from Farmingdale High School, and two are attending Woodwood Parkway, my third grader Yahia, and my fifth grader Isa, who are here with me today, and they're sitting there very, very patiently. I would like to start off by commending the Farmingdale School District for always supporting my family and my children, for everything that we've ever needed, we've come to, and you guys have been very open-minded and supported us. For this reason, I'm here today to start the conversation of our holiday Eid. As Muslim Americans, we celebrate two major holidays, Eid al-Fitr and Eid al-Adha, which are equivalent to your Christmas, Easter, or Yom Kippur, and Rosh Hashanah. Our first holiday is called Eid al-Fitr, which is celebrated right after, um, 30 days of fasting in Ramadan, which millions of Muslims around the world observe, observe. Our second holiday is Eid al-Adha, which signifies the Hajj pilgrimage in Mecca. Both of these holidays signify peace, charity, and importance of family. Every year, when these holidays are approaching, we always look to see if it falls on the weekend, because we all know we are off. But when it falls on the weekday, it is very hard for us to celebrate with all our family and loved ones. I'm seeing the Muslim-American population growing rapidly in Farmingdale. When my older boys, um, were younger and attending school, there was a handful of Muslims. Now, my, um, little ones are actually saying, "Mom, there's about two to three new Muslim friends in our classes." In fact, this year's valedictorian and salutatorian of Farmingdale High School are Wasim Ahmed and Ali Ahmed. Congratulations to them and their families. I'd really like to share why I'm standing here before all of you tonight. I was extremely motivated by my eight-year-old son Yahia, who recently raised his hand in class and wanted to know, "Why are we not off for Eid?" Recently, New York City schools have approved both Eid al-Fitr and Eid al-Adha as official holidays for the academic year.
Ma'am, I just want to let you know you have about 15 seconds.
I'm almost done. As well as several Long Island school districts, such as Jericho, Sayyaseh, Hericks, Havhallow Hills, Hicksville, Deer Park, and so many more. So I am here today to request my Farmingdale School District Board to do the same and answer my Yahia's question with a yes. We will be off for your holiday Eid as well. Thank you for your time and listening to my, uh, speech. Yahia, let's pick you. That's my third grader right there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about the confusion during the first public session.
No worries.
Um, you know, first, I want to say, uh, go back to last year when our organization hosted Long Island Pride right here in the Village of Farmingdale, and say thank you to the School Board for really working with us and allowing for the parking for what was a very successful event in, um, in bringing a lot of people to Farmingdale, bringing a lot of community, a lot of family, and a lot of revenue to the village as well. Um, I was glad to hear you say that there is no threat against the GSA. That is some, uh, some of the scuttlebutt, if you will, that's going around. Uh, but we also heard that the LGBT Network Safe Space stickers, which have been up in, for a very long time, for decades, um, in the school, were taken down before the parent-teacher conference, um, under the guise that, um, that it was a fire hazard to put them on, on the windows. So if I heard you correctly, when you, when, before the public participation started, when you talked about the, you know, the, the rainbow flag or the pride flag, um, that it's not going to be removed, what can the teachers do if they're being told one thing when the stickers are being taken down, when they're over the weekend, when they're not there, um, and being told that they're taken down because it's a fire hazard of putting it on the window, but hearing you say that you're not going to do that?
Before, are you done with your questions? Because we have about another minute and 20 seconds. We'll, we'll address your question.
Yeah, I'm done with the question.
Okay. Mr. Devonini?
Thank you, Mr. Morales. And if you could just pause the 30-minute timer, Ms. Rogers, while I, it's gonna take a few minutes, and I don't want to take up other people's time. Um, the short is, yeah, that some, somehow, I don't know why that was communicated. I know that a tremendous amount of effort was actually placed, having individual conversations with the individuals where there was any change to any flyers or materials that were on doors or walls or, or in any other place. And, and yes, I understand that there are people that would be unhappy with the decision, uh, you know, on behalf of the district to take that down, but it wasn't in response to taking it down for LGBTQ-based reasons. That wasn't the pretense behind the decision. The decision to take them down was predicated on trying to come up with, we are living in a new world, right? And we're providing access to students. We're providing, uh, resources to students through social media and online platforms that we've never done before. We've had a couple of issues in our district where there have been some concerns with regard to some of the resources we've shared, even though, again, people have gone to great lengths to try to protect our students in every way. Again, I celebrate our teachers and the work that they do every single day, trying to provide that safe environment for our students. that they do every single day, trying to provide that safe environment for our students, but those things do happen, where every once in a while, something gets out, and a student gets into a place where they shouldn't be. That was the effort that we were undertaking over the course of the week, and even leading through the weekend, every effort was actually made to try to preserve the sticker, and to just take off the bottom portion of it, which had information which connects people to websites and other sorts, that was the direction and the conversation that we had had with the board, with the administrative team, those were individual conversations, again, that were held, to try to prevent people from misunderstanding the fact that the reason that we were doing this was a slight at the LGBT world, it was not, it was an effort to try to do the best we can controlling those outside resources, when we don't necessarily have direct control of what happens when our students access them. And again, we worked with, in many instances, some of the people in question, to try to find a substitute to that, that still could provide that same safe space, ally-based circumstance, without necessarily a link to the outside that we don't have control over. Again, it wasn't a slight, it wasn't a knock on anybody, but it was a, a clear attempt to try to control what might be outside resources that we don't have connected to. That was the effort that was made, nothing was taken off in the weekend without anybody's knowledge, we worked as hard as we could to make sure that that narrative isn't something that got out there, somehow it got out there nonetheless, despite what I can tell you was a tremendous effort that was placed on that work over the course of the last week.
Sure, so I would respectfully disagree with you, that was a slight, that it wasn't a slight, because that information that was taken off at the bottom is the organization that I have been running for thirty years, that has helped thousands and thousands of kids and families, and the reason why it was taken off was because you had a couple of people here from a Southern Poverty, Southern Poverty Law-designated hate group that read a script about saying that LGBT people are basically pedophiles, and you don't know what's going on at the LGBT Network? I'm here, you have any questions, ask me, I'll tell you. That is a slight, and that also is a violation of the Dignity for All Students Act as well, what was done in the school. And so you can't say that you're taking off the bottom of it, which is a local resource that has been around for three decades. Our job in the schools is not to protect the bigots, it's to protect the students who need the services. So I'm glad you clarified that, because what you did was actually target the LGBT community, because as the LGBT Network, the largest service provider in this region, and the seventh-largest in the country, actually, and have been around for thirty years, you're taking away a valuable resource that the students, the parents, the teachers, the families, and all of you should know about. I'd be more than happy to sit down with you to talk about this.
Sir, doctor, your three minutes have elapsed, but thank you.
Thank you. And just one more, one more point again, that I just want to make before we continue with the public participation, it wasn't just LGBT websites that were taken down, all websites were taken down, it wasn't specifically targeted at LGBT. Again, there have been other issues that have had nothing to do with the LGBT community that have caused us concerns here in-house with regard to sharing outside websites. Again, it's part of a body of work, but I promise you, that was not the intention behind it, I understand full well, obviously, an organization that you have started, you could feel slighted as a result of that, but that was not the plan, that was not the target with regard to the work that we commenced last week.
I'm not worried about me feeling slighted, it's the kids, this is about-
Okay, sir, I'm sorry, you, you can't talk out of turn at this point, we, we have to keep a decorum here, so we have another, we have another person at the mic, ma'am, you may introduce yourself, please.
Again, I'm Dr. Carrie Spooner, I'm an educator, I'm raising a nine-year-old here with my wife, and yes, taking down that website for the LGBT Network is a slight, it saves lives. And the effects of an unsafe school environment, which that act creates, and the effects of discrimination carry into adulthood, it wasn't a surprise to me when on October seventh, Stony Brook Medicine released key findings from its 2021 LGBTQ plus health needs survey. The study reveals critical health insights about Long Island's LGBTQ adults, such as forty-three point six percent of respondents rated themselves as being in fear to poor mental health, thank you for removing that website, by the way. Thirty-three point five percent had thoughts of self-harm, again, thank you. Twenty-three point nine percent had seriously considered suicide within the past three years, you've got students here who will soon be adults, taking down that website could hurt them. Supporting LGBTQ youth involves trying to understand and reduce factors like taking down websites, like the LGBT Network, that increase their risk. Let's try to save lives and not destroy them. I also want to draw your attention to your school district's notification of non-discrimination. The Farmingdale Union Free School District provides equal employment and educational opportunities to all individuals, without regard to race, color, national origin, creed, religion, marital status, gender, age, disability, military status, genetic predisposition, carrier status, or sexual orientation. In addition, the Farmingdale UFSD does not discriminate in accordance with the Dignity for All Student Act. So I have a question, New York's Dignity for All Student Act, in it, it requires that there's a Dignity Act coordinator. At least one staff member at every school must be designated and trained to handle human relations in the areas of race, color, weight, national origin, ethnic group, religion, religious practice, disability, sexual orientation, gender, and sex. Do you have a coordinator at Farmingdale? Thank you.
Yes, we do have a coordinator, each one of our buildings, in most instances, it's the assistant principal, you can certainly call the main office, and they would direct you to the correct person.
Hello, board, a part of our progress flag includes LGBT youth with disabilities.
Sorry, sir, could you just tell us your name and address, please?
Yeah, sure, Chase, Wandlin Haven Place, South Stalkin.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem. So, a part of our progress flag includes LGBT youth with disabilities, the prefix dis means not or none, the word ability is defined as having the power, skill, means, or opportunity to do the same, to do something. I saw that you have a disability service, services facility, that is lovely, I commend you, thank you so much. I'm bringing this up to hopefully prevent bullying before it occurs, for clarification, I will refer to students as student one and student two, if student one walks into the disability services room and is seen by student two entering this room, student two is now aware that there is something wrong with student one, this can lead to bullying. My question is, is there another title to call the room, possibly student support services? I bring this up for the reason that a person's abilities isn't anyone's business, besides the person with a disability, as well as, as specified school staff members.
The only response I can provide is, maybe you can share with me whatever it is that you're specifically referring to, I've been in this district a long time, I have no knowledge of a room that's termed as such, but if you want to share that with me, through an email, I can certainly respond after I'm able to research that more.
Sure, yeah, yeah, there's a room specifically labeled Disability Services. So, yeah, if I could get your email after, that'd be great.
Sure.
Okay, thank you so much.
Would anyone else like to come up to the mic?
Wait, one more thing, with the coordinator, the coordinator-
Ma'am, I'm sorry, you, you really spoke, we can't have you come up again.
Do you, does the coordinator speak to you?
Okay, thank you, everyone, for your, your comments, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, have a good night.